Okay, I think we're gonna get started. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Jim Michael. I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. Tonight, we're here for the public hearing for the Greenwich Avenue ADA improvements. So, next slide. So, tonight, kind of the format's gonna be, I'm gonna give a presentation about the project, and then, once the presentation's completed, then we'll be opening it up for public comment. We'll ask that if anybody here in the audience is wanting to speak, if you could just sign up. If you're not sure if you want to speak yet or not, please sign up. We'll call you. If you decide you don't want to speak, you can just say "pass" when your time comes. Each person will have three minutes to speak. We also are doing this virtually, so this meeting is being recorded. So, and being through Zoom, and we will have people available on the Zoom line to be able to make comments as well. So, we'll call on them. We'll kind of go back and forth a little bit, you know, do three or four here in person, a couple online, back and forth as we go. So, with me also in the back of the room is Gabriella. She's kind of running the technical piece of this, and we'll help out. So, this project is for improvements to address ADA modifications and concerns on Greenwich Avenue. There's many challenges that we face with Greenwich Avenue and ADA accessibility. Greenwich Avenue has been around for many, many years. Many of the buildings have been there. The slopes of Greenwich Avenue, if you think about from the top to the bottom, there's a significant slope on that, which makes it challenging to meet certain aspects of ADA compliance. And also, there's a lot of different parking concerns, lighting concerns, all kinds of different things. And we're gonna address all of that tonight. So, go ahead and hit the next slide, please. So, first, I'm gonna kind of talk about one of the conditions that was put on funding. So, this project was funded in the 24-25 budget for $450,000. There was conditions put on it, and I'm gonna speak about those. I'm gonna discuss a little bit about what ADA requirements are, some of the design, and then I'm gonna provide design exhibits of all the different intersections that we have. I'm gonna talk about the parking impacts to the project, briefly talk about lighting and beautification, talk about some turning movements, some safety improvements, and then what are our next steps? So, next slide. So, when we look at the funding, the funding was provided at $450,000 in the fiscal year 24-25 budget. It was subject to release by the Board of Estimation and Taxation upon a widely-publicized, to residents, Greenwich Avenue property owners, and key retail and restaurant tenants, public hearing on Greenwich Avenue improvements, together with a presentation that includes a schematic, including a parking plan with all current and to-be-executed parking spaces, including new placement of ADA parking spaces and related curb ramps. For the eight intersections which will be modified, any changes in pedestrian ramps, street layout, including bumpouts, or any sidewalk extension, an overall lighting improvement and beautification plan, and plans to include any safety improvements, including those for all customers, including ADA for Greenwich Avenue Retail and Restaurants. So... So, what exactly is ADA accessibility? ADA accessibility, the town uses what's considered PROWAG, which is a Public Right-of-Way and Accessibility Guide. It includes, and you'll see here, ADA ramps. There's certain requirements on an ADA ramp for slopes, for what we call, the technical term is the detectable warning device. That's the little red dome structures that are on the, when you get to an intersection. Those are not just, some people think they're for traction. They're to help people with visual impairments be able to notice that there's a crossing at that location, gives indication there. And then there's certain slopes that we have to meet in order to make sure that there's proper landings, so that if somebody were in a wheelchair, or just being able to get around, accessibility is the key piece. We have to meet certain widths, and all of those are outlined through federal guidelines, and this kind of talks briefly about that. So, next slide. So, I'm gonna jump right into the each individual intersection that we have. So, I'm gonna start at the top of the avenue and work my way down and briefly describe what we're looking at. So, go ahead. So, this is, as you can see, is the top of Greenwich Avenue. This is an existing photograph, or existing aerial photo, of what it looks like today. And then, what we'll slide into next, and go ahead, Gabriella, is what we're looking at making a modification on. So, the change here is utilizing some of the area that is currently just hatched-out area to shorten somewhat of the crossing, be able to accomplish the ADA slopes that are necessary in order to have the proper slopes at an intersection, and improving the better parking for an ADA stall by adding a dedicated ADA stall along the curb line with its dedicated ramp. So...
Jim, can you just point out, I'm just a little confused with the diagram, where Greenwich Avenue is and...
Okay. So, Route 1 is here, and this is Greenwich Avenue coming down here.
Can you explain with the yellow, with that yellow?
So, the yellow in these pictures is the new sidewalk, or the replacement of existing sidewalk to meet the proper slopes.
And then the other one? It shows it to be four, and that four is put on top, right, the patchwork, so we can see where you did Greenwich.
So, the, if we go back just one slide, real quick, what you can, what you'll notice is the curb line along here primarily stays the same and stays here with a slight area for landscaping, and also, and I will address one more thing. So, go ahead and move it forward.
So, can you please tell what is the ADA requirement and what is...
So, I'll get to that, yes. So, the ADA requirement is we need to improve these ramps here at this intersection to meet the proper slopes. In order to do that, the curb line currently comes through this stretch here. So, we have to bring it out in order to meet the ADA slope improvement here.
So, what's the slope now, and what's the improvement?
This, these improvements meet the compliance of ADA.
I know, what's the difference? I'm trying to figure out, we're not in compliance at all?
We're not, we're not in compliance at many of these locations, correct.
Meaning the street's too wide for national ADA compliance?
Meaning the ramps do not meet ADA compliance.
And is the green...
What about the ramps, Jim? Does it meet compliance? It only looks like they're like you've extended the sidewalk down the post road to shorten the distance from the west side to the east side, and you've got a whole green section in there, which doesn't have anything to do with a ramp. It looks like you're gonna put Astroturf in there.
Can't you pull that ramp back on the bottom avenue?
So, in order to meet the ADA compliance, we need to place these ramps here in order to meet the slopes that are necessary for ADA compliance.
Why wouldn't you just put the...
In addition...
...put the existing sidewalk in? Why do you have to do this extension?
So...
Is this supposed to be a public comment, like through the public meeting or...
So, I will address, so, public meeting, this is, I'm going to, so, I'm going to describe each of these intersections. Once we're completed through the presentation, there will be time for each person to make public comment.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Jim, it's a little difficult for us to understand what's going on if you don't address our immediate questions. For us to wait till we're, question asked for number 12, to sit down and say, on slide number four, there was green space that we didn't understand, and you said there was a slogan to this woman's question. You said, "Many are not in compliance." Is this one currently in compliance, this particular, yes or no?
Pretty much every location, every intersection on the avenue is out of compliance currently.
I'm looking for an answer without qualifications. Is this out of compliance?
Yes.
Okay, so, and in order...
So, so, I'm going to go through the improvements.
...to show the only solution.
These are the solutions that DPW is proposing in order to meet ADA compliance.
Is it a slope issue?
So, it's a, it's a combination of the slope issue, and in addition, what we're looking to do is we're looking to address parking concerns. So, we've added an ADA parking stall here with a dedicated ramp to get to that. There's currently a fire hydrant in this area that we, in order for us to be able to place this, we're relocating that fire hydrant into this area. We're relocating the light post to this area to better improve lighting at the intersection. There's currently a non-compliant ADA parking stall along the edge of the road here. We're making that parking stall right here, which then, as a result, this intersection has zero net parking change. Next slide.
Why would you put the handicap on the left side, move a hydra and cost it?
So, the next location is Greenwich Avenue at Amagerone.
So, every intersection is going to have a 12-foot ramp going into the road surface?
So, this is Amagerone Crossway. This is the crossing.
Can you just let him present?
This is the crossing as it currently exists. There's currently hatched-in areas here, which increase the length of this crossing. There's currently area here that, there's, that is increasing the length of the crossway. Next slide. What we're also, there's also a hydrant in this area over here, which we're going to be relocating out to this location, which makes it more accessible to the fire department and gives us the opportunity to improve the parking at this location by adding an ADA stall here with a dedicated ramp to that ADA stall that comes to the sidewalk. The crosswalks are put in here. We add lighting here on both sides in order to give better lighting to this intersection. We've put the curb line out through here with the proper ADA ramp location that allows for proper ramp connecting into the sidewalk. So, next slide.
Jim, we don't lose a parking spot there, do we?
No. So, 99 Greenwich Avenue, this is near the, yeah, the CVS. There's currently an ADA stall in this location here, and if we go to the next slide, we've actually flip-flopped where the ADA stall is. This ADA stall is out of compliance, and it doesn't have a dedicated ramp, so there's no, a proper dedicated ramp at that location that meets compliance. We have corrected the parking stall widths and so forth in this area to make it a proper ADA parking stall with a dedicated ramp for that parking stall there.
Jim, where's Elm Street on that, is it not already?
Elm Street's like down in the floor at the moment, so... This is, this is between Amagerone and Lewis Street. So, next slide. So, Greenwich Avenue at Lewis Street. So, this is what we currently have. We have two large trees in this area that many people associate with the banner. Those are not going to be modified, changed, or impacted as part of this improvement. Go ahead to the next piece. So, this sidewalk falls in the area where the sidewalk currently exists. All this sidewalk is exactly the same location as where it currently exists. We're placing the ADA stalls at this location with proper ADA ramps here, going from the parking stalls to the curb line, and making sure that all the crosswalks and curb ramps are now ADA compliant.
They're not compliant, right?
The intersection is not a perpendicular intersection to begin with, so this is not one that we can, the road, if you look at the road center line as it exists here, which we're not changing, it's down here, and it's offset by about 12 feet over here. There's not really anything that we can do without completely reconstructing the entire intersection, which would mean taking buildings down, and we're not proposing to do that. The next location is what many people know as St. Mary's Church, but it's 178 Greenwich Avenue. There's currently two non-compliant with ADA stalls in that area. What we're looking to do there, go ahead and click forward, is we're going to change, properly stripe these two ADA stalls with a dedicated ADA ramp through there that meets all the proper sloping. So, that just corrects an existing non-conformance there.
So, it will be two spaces instead of three?
It's, it's two today, and it's two then.
So, it's not wide enough? Is that what you're saying?
The way they have the two, the ramp, the side ramps on each side here, these hatched areas are not proper, they have three of these hatched areas which only, which don't comply. We're making a proper hatched area that allows for maneuverability with people with vans or other people to get out of their vehicles into that hatched area.
So, what sounds compliant?
The widths of the hatched areas are out of compliance in this location.
How do they have to be?
Eight feet. Eight feet stall, eight foot width. So, next, next slide. Greenwich Avenue at Bruce Place and near the Bruce Place and near the Greenwich Common Park. So, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement. Because of the way these improvements are, I've, we've had to flip this for visual purposes. Greenwich Avenue now, the top of Greenwich Avenue is this direction, so Elm Street is up this direction. And for those on Zoom, Greenwich, or the top of Greenwich Avenue is on the left of the screen, and the bottom of Greenwich Avenue is on the right of the screen. The senior center is at the very upper-right corner of the property. Okay? So, what we've looked at here, there's currently an existing, this curb line all stays in the same location. It's not being moved outward. There's an existing ADA stall that's non-compliant here that we're making proper compliance widths and a dedicated ramp with proper sloping. In addition, we're adding an additional ADA stall in this area and adding a couple new ADA parking stalls in this same vicinity, and a couple standard parking stalls in this area as well, because we're relocating an existing fire hydrant in this vicinity down to the intersection of the parking lot going into the Hevermeyer Building on the north side. At this location going on to Bruce Place, we're shortening the crossing there and making the proper slopes on the ADA sidewalk ramps through that location. We're adjusting the location of, we're adding an ADA parking stall here with a dedicated ADA ramp. Okay, next slide. So, Greenwich Avenue at Art Street. I know this intersection has been a topic of discussion many times in the past, and so, I will spend a little bit more time on this one, but making note of a couple things. So, go ahead. So, as I discussed before, Greenwich Avenue, the top of Greenwich Avenue is on the left of the page. The bottom of Greenwich Avenue is on the right of the page. The Hevermeyer Building would be on the bottom of the page, and senior center and Starbucks are on the top of this intersection. So, go ahead to the next piece. So, as you can see here, there's been very minimal changes to the curb lines and sidewalks. Art Street, the curb lines stay the same on Art Street. There's no change to the corner here where the water fountain is, in that circle. There's no change on the curb line here. We have added a little bit of sidewalk extension here in the hatched-in area to shorten the crossing across to the senior center. We've added a dedicated ADA stall here with a dedicated ramp on this side of the building. We've added an additional parking stall here, and we've modified the parking to have an ADA stall on the side near Starbucks with a dedicated ramp, and then near the Restaurant Hardware, another ADA stall with a dedicated ramp and hatched-in area there. So...
So, you've taken the two, the two handicaps outside the front of Starbucks, and it's down to one now?
We've modified the two that are in front of Starbucks and made that one by adding one on the opposite side of the street here, and making this one, the two, we added two regular stalls on this side of the road where one of those ADA stalls is currently. Okay. Next slide. Greenwich Avenue at Fawcett and Grig. Go ahead. So, now, we're going back to Greenwich Avenue. Top of Greenwich Avenue is at the top of the page. Bottom of Greenwich Avenue is at the bottom of the page. This location currently has, this was a project that was done back in the late '90s, early 2000s of installing some curb extensions and decorative crosswalks at this location. We're making very minor modifications to this location. So, go ahead to the next one. Here, we have to correct, down in the bottom-left corner near Mediterranean, that is correcting some ADA slope on that ADA ramp, and looking at relocating a light pole to better give light to that intersection. One thing that has come up as a topic of discussion over the past few years is there's an ADA parking stall here that oftentimes gets covered with outdoor dining nodes over the summer. In order to accommodate that, we have moved that ADA stall to the opposite side of the street with its own dedicated ramp in an area which is not utilized for outdoor dining node, so that that ADA stall is not displaced during outdoor dining season. We've created a dedicated ADA ramp there, and we've installed proper ADA ramps here and also at the location here going to the north. In addition, we've, over in front of Richards, we've added an ADA stall there with its own dedicated ramp and hatched area, and we've shortened the crossing distance here at this location. We've added some additional new parking stalls in front of Richards here that were not there before. Greenwich Avenue at Railroad and Steamboat and Bruce Park Avenue. So, this is the last one on the list here. So, next, next slide. So, now, we've gone back to the bottom of the avenue, or the top of the avenue to the left of the page, the bottom of the avenue to the right of the page. Go ahead. We've, we had a non-compliant ADA parking stall on this side of the road near the alley, which also fell into one of the dining nodes. What we've done is we've created two ADA parking stalls with a dedicated ramp on the opposite side of the street in this vicinity. We've corrected the ADA non-compliance at this location, at the two locations on the corner of Railroad Avenue. The location that's on the, what I'm gonna call the northeast corner, that is currently compliant, so we're not doing any modifications there, and the southwest corner is part of improvements that will be done as part of the reconstruction of the theater building. So... So, those are the improvements that we're proposing at each intersection. So, next slide. So, when we look at the parking, in May of 2023, a parking count, we had 388 parking stalls, 17 accessible parking stalls, for a total of 405 parking stalls on the entire Greenwich Avenue. Based on this project, we planned in doing all the improvements, and as you've noticed, we're adding two accessible parking stalls, so that we have a total of 19 stalls. In order to do that, we lose four standard stalls, and so, we have a net total number of stalls after this project of 403. So, there's 384 standard stalls and 19 accessible stalls. Next slide. So, street lighting, questions have come up in the past about street lighting. We're not changing any street lighting. We're not proposing, and oftentimes, some people will ask and think about street lighting as a traffic signal. We're not talking about traffic signals at this point as part of this project. Traffic signals are the red, yellow, green things. Street lights are something completely different. Street lights are just the black posts with a lamp at the top to light up the sidewalks, intersections, et cetera, the roadways. As part of this, we've added two new light poles, and we've relocated some of those light poles closer to the intersections to help illuminate those crossing locations at each of the intersections. Those are the only modifications that we're doing to lighting on Greenwich Avenue. And just one quick thing on the light poles. Any new light poles are gonna be the same style, design, et cetera, that we're doing, that we currently have out there. Landscaping, what we've started to do is, we met with this tree warden and walked the avenue, looked at the tree wells that were currently out there. There is a mixed design of all kinds of different designs. We came up with a standard agreeable that we're looking to meet wherever possible of a four-foot-by-eight-foot tree well that will accommodate a tree and potentially any additional landscaping, and those will be installed as we're doing modifications to the sidewalks up and down Greenwich Avenue. These, in addition, a couple of the, where we've talked about the curb extensions that are necessary in order to meet the ADA compliance, we'll be creating plant, some small planter areas that will be landscaped, and that has been coordinated with the Parks Department. They will be utilizing the landscape palette that has been utilized in other areas of Greenwich Avenue, and they are on board with the long-term maintenance and coordination of planting those locations with us.
Are any trees on the plants, or any trees coming down that exist currently because of this plant?
There are no trees coming down as part of this project, and we've already added multiple trees to the avenue in the short stretch that we've done between Grig and Railroad Avenue already. And we continue to look for opportunities to add additional trees and tree wells as we move up and down the avenue wherever feasible. So... One of the questions that often comes up is, can vehicles get through here? Prior to doing any of these, and prior to doing any of our designs, what we do meet with is we meet with the fire department, we meet with the, our highway division. We have them put, we put cones out based on our designs. We have the trucks drive those intersections to make sure that they can maneuver through those, give us feedback on that, and we have done that in many of these locations, and we'll continue to do that as we get closer to the actual construction of each location. to the actual construction of each location. But at this point in time, any minor adjustments would need to be, would be made as necessary. We have tentatively looked at this with all those departments and they are in agreement with what we have proposed is acceptable to them. So they are not concerned with what we're looking to do. Next slide. So when it comes to safety improvements, a couple of the things that curb extensions provide is they do slow vehicles down as they make turns. They make the pedestrians more visible because they're closer to the roadway when they're waiting to cross the road because currently they're set back beyond a parking stall and they oftentimes can get hidden behind cars that are parked near the intersection. They reduce the crossing distance. They reduce parking conflicts at each of the intersections. And they were able to relocate lighting, which is closer to the intersections, which helps to improve visibility. And we're able to put the signs in slightly better locations, which are more visible as people are moving down the avenue. One thing to note about the safety improvements, and we've heard this a few times, so that if it does come up as a question from people, the raised nature or the speed hump type feel of Elm Street is not proposed at any of these other intersections that we're proposing to do. So that was a different design that we incorporated and we're not planning to replicate that design at any of these intersections. That will not be completed as part of this. So that hopefully that answers that question that may have come up.
Can I ask another question about that, about that intersection? Can I ask for that?
Elm Street?
Yes.
Elm Street's not part of this project, so.
No, I just, I'd like to know that you said that regarding that raised area, that won't be part of future ones, but was anything else learned from the first bump out being at Elm Street from what is there now and all the testing and all the analysis that was done? Was anything else learned that would be implemented in regarding these future bump outs?
Yes, yes. As with any project in DPW, we're always taking into account and looking at what the results of the project are, what things we see, what things we can do, what things have worked out properly, what things have not. One of the things that we've heard is that people do, and do like the looks of the location. They like the appearance of that. We've looked, you know, we've looked at and included the fire department and, you know, highway division as part of that project, as part of our projects moving forward. We've, other than that, more or less, you know, the, the raisedness of it is not as desirable. And that's, those are the main modifications that we've made due to that. So, next slide. So what are our next steps? So our next steps are we would, following this meeting, we'll be looking to get a release of the condition for this so that these funds are available in the 24, 25 budget season. The area near DOT, near Route 1, we will need to get a special permit through DOT for this work. So we'll be looking to do that. DPW is replacing sidewalks and curbs along Greenwich Avenue prior to repaving. And our goal is to repave either later this year or in the spring, depending on the timing it takes to get all the work done. And so that's what we're looking to do. So, next slide. So, so with that, we will then, now we'll kind of go through and let each person speak. Like I said, I'm going to move this here to kind of towards the middle of the room so people can speak. And then once, once you've spoken, there'll be a timer on the screen for your three minutes. Once you've spoken, I'll keep track of comments and I will try to address any questions and comments as after we've gone through each person. So, thank you.
And if anyone on the Zoom meeting would like to speak, you can go ahead and raise your hands and we'll call on you shortly.
Okay, Pam Fontana, followed by David Wold.
Hi, Jim, thank you so much for giving us this presentation. This is something that I think as residents, we're all curious about and concerned about. I think we all applaud the town's efforts to comply with ADA and we're very keen to know where we're out of compliance and when we're, when we are actually in compliance. My questions are, you spoke a lot to things that you heard that people wanted, whether it was lighting or, or, or moving fire hydrants, but you never spoke to the fact that so many of the residents complained about the bump outs originally and said, we don't actually want more bump outs. And it seems as if in incorporating these bump out, these ADA compliant ramps, rather than moving deeper into the existing sidewalk, you've moved out into the existing road and therefore suddenly in some of the spots, there are bump outs, which we all again vocally said, we really don't want. As we've seen them play out, we've seen the plantings get very leggy and long. And you feel like when you're trying to make a turn, you're looking through the savanna for small children. It's tough and it's dangerous. And most of the accidents have not been in the intersections. They have been in maneuvering and parking. And it seems like with all of this additional objective of not just ADA, but suddenly bumping out, may have actually started increasing our chances of dangerous situations in backing out and parking, which is where most of our accidents are. And I'm wondering particularly at the top of Greenwich Ave, was it necessary to really narrow Greenwich Ave off the post road? It seems like there's already such expansive walkways there that the slope, and now you're the engineer and I'm not, can happen deeper into the side of the existing sidewalk. So it doesn't mean we're narrowing that. And as I know that when you're coming up Greenwich Ave and you've got First Presby on your right and you're taking a left into Greenwich Ave, people utilize that, that apron to get in there through those high traffic times. And so narrowing that just means like, it seems to me, drivers will start scooting and exploiting little tiny windows of opportunity. And for a place where we've never had accidents, is this going to be a new accident? So I would like to see a presentation that's not only ADA compliant with what I'm assuming is beautification, but ADA compliant period. How can we make ourselves be a town that welcomes all visitors to our beautiful Greenwich Ave without these bump outs encroaching on the driver's space? I'd like to see the, a different proposal. Thank you so much. And again, I really appreciate your candor and all that you presented to us.
Okay, David Wold, followed by Beth McGill, Gilvery.
Yeah, good evening. I just made some quick notes while you were going through this. As you know, I've been asking you about it for the last year or so. Will these ADA compliances be implemented across town? Last, two years ago, we had only down by the Greenwich Avenue and Arch Street plus 12 parking spaces. This plan is minus four in eight intersections. What is the budget for these eight intersections? You referred to turning test entering Greenwich Avenue. Was the same procedure done down at Delavan Avenue on, on the turning test? What is the distance between the ADA parkings on Greenwich Avenue? I assume they would like to do shopping just like the rest of us in down the avenues. I would like to know what distance there is between each of the parking spaces. Similar question as was mentioned earlier, you seem to be sloping into the roadway. Other places you've managed to slope it within the sidewalk. We were talking about it two years ago on Greenwich Avenue about crosswalks has to be straightened to minimize the walking distance. You seem to be maintaining the same angle on the crosswalks without, even when you move them, you, you still want to keep the longer distance to cross the road. So I'm just wondering if you could straighten that out and reconfiguring where you put the ADA parking and where you do the crosswalks. So I give one minute and one second to anybody else who would like to have it.
Okay, Beth, followed by, is it Nan Levy?
Good evening. Thank, thank you for your presentation. I stand here not only for the residents, but many of the businesses that rely on Greenwich Avenue, but also for my elderly parents that are 93 and 97 and my special needs nephew. Our community is deeply concerned about the proposed changes to this historic and beloved area under the guise of safety and modern recommendations. The Elm Street bump out has been very difficult for older people, moms with strollers, kids running around, this narrowing. It, it's very difficult maneuvering and adding that at each intersection is only going to complicate the use of the avenue. Moreover, the flooding concerns cannot be overlooked. The bump outs have caused a lot of pooling and exasperated drainage problems. I think those bump outs into the road as well makes it very difficult for snowplows to get around in the winter. It's making it much more complicated. But I have also some concern about the area down by Starbucks. That's a historical area and we wouldn't want to lose that distinction. That's one of the hallmarks of Greenwich. Those are just some of my questions. And then I had, you know, another question you mentioned that you were going to move three hydrants. Is there not another way that you can set it up so that we don't lose the handicap spots and we can keep the hydrants without that expensive change? It's, you know, Greenwich Avenue is a pretty long street. And from what I can tell right now, we are in compliance with the percentage of handicap spaces for the number of parking spaces. And then the only other comment was many of the people that have, I've spoken to are upset about the lack of parking, how every bump out, you lose eight spots, six spots. And it's gotten really difficult on Greenwich Avenue. There is more 15-minute spots on the avenue and people want to park right on the avenue. It's prime, primary. And then there's also plenty of people that would love to see the police back on the avenue. They thought it was much safer with police. Thank you.
All right. Nan, followed by Francia.
Thank you for this opportunity. I took the time to visit some of the retailers so I could be more informed about what the impact of becoming ADA compliant on Elm and Branch Avenue was to the retailers and to what their observations were. So I spoke to a number of the retailers then today. So I'm just going to kind of go through their comments. These are really not mine. Their feeling is that we have offset becoming ADA compliant with becoming more chaotic and hazardous for pedestrians, vehicles, handicapped people, and for now the retailers who feel less safe with the increase to more crime. One of the retailers said, it's a free for all. All of them, there were seven different retailers that I spoke to, all of them said the police were physically, visibly a deterrent. So now they're gone and they are witnessing chaos. One showed me a picture today of a commercial, I have it on my phone, if anybody would like to see it after the meeting, of a large commercial vehicle trying to go from east to west on, I'm sorry, west to east on Elm and make a turn down Greenwich Avenue. After tying up traffic for almost 10 minutes, they were heading right into Betteridge, had to reverse and then cross over and keep going straight. They couldn't make a turn. The manager or one of the senior people in Baccarat, who took the picture, also told me about a fire truck crossing over Elm Street that got stuck because of the high cobblestone or whatever you call the stone. And two of the firemen who had to get out and spend time removing the truck and unlodging it from the, the planting beds. What I noticed about ADA, and I never would have noticed this before in front of Betteridge, there are two spots on the left as you're coming down the avenue, on the right, obviously, in front of the bank. The first spot is a hazard for handicapped people. That's why I was asking, what have we learned from the first time? So anybody getting out of the driver's side in spot one cannot unload with a walker. A cane is troublesome, definitely not with a wheelchair. And the gentleman inside the employer in Betteridge says he watches handicapped people and elderly people come out of that car and stumble into the rose bushes. This sounds a little sadistic, but honestly, go and look, there's, there was not sufficient space allowed to unload from the first spot out of the car. Not only that, but the passenger and anybody in the backseat must unload on that side, come down the side of the car and into the path of traffic in order to come towards the sidewalk. This is a big mistake in the design. Everybody said they wish we had addressed the safety issue and replaced the policeman thoughtfully. So we have traded and I can go through the, these comments, but I'm already down to a few seconds. But in two stores, when they do not have customers, Baccarat and Lugano, they look out their windows and see near misses almost every minute and they talk about it. One woman said she was almost hit today. She will not run errands during her lunch hour. She said, she, one person even said, the cars play chicken with each other. Thank you.
Okay, Francia. Phil Dodson, followed by Kate.
After that, we'll switch to Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. I just have some comments on this. This is a replay of a lot of, 90% of this is the same plans that so many objections were made to several years ago. As far as like the turning radius, I personally observed trucks, large trucks at Elm Street, trying to make that turn, mount the curb and the back of a trailer actually saw hit the arm that had plant, plant in it on the streetlight. And it, it moved the streetlight. I thought maybe it would come down. Fortunately, it didn't. Down in Byram, as you know, you did have a truck take down a street lamp on one of these bump outs down there. The fact that you're going to try to do this on all the intersections by the fall, I don't think you're going to be able to do it. And the disruption to Greenwich Avenue, especially during the summer with the, with the outdoor dining. And you've had the water company out there and everything. It's really a mess. Also, as I recall, to do all these intersections, it was going to cost, I think it was three and a half or $4 million. We haven't heard anything about the cost. This 450 is just for the planning. And I think that's going to take, like I say, to say you're going to do this in the fall or spring, I don't think is good. Also Elm Street, the problems at Elm Street will never be addressed or it'll never be safe until you put a trap. safe until you put a traffic light there. One of the problems is on all these crosswalks, by law pedestrians have the right of way. And the problem is they don't stop crossing. When it's busy during the day with all the shoppers or in the summer, there's a constant flow of people and they don't wait for cars. And the cars don't want to risk the responsibility if there's an accident. So you definitely need a traffic light there. And I would also say at Havemar and Arch. And for those that say, talk about the police, police are not going to come back. And another reason is because, and I can speak from experience here, the narrowed intersection at Elm Street is so narrow now, it would actually be dangerous for anybody. There's not enough room for anyone to stand there and direct traffic. It's unfortunate that, I mean, there was so much opposition to just the one intersection at Arch Street. And now to be proposing from top to bottom, I think really this needs to be reconsidered and people are going to raise a lot of objections. Thank you.
Kate, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Hi, my name is Kate Jakovic. I'm the Executive Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. We're very pleased to see that you're saying that the trees won't be modified or changed by this project as well as having the involvement of the tree warden, Dr. Greg Kramer. But we just wanted to point out that lack of modification and change does include more than just cutting down trees. So we want to make sure that during this process, there's going to be a lot of efforts made to mitigate harm to our existing mature trees in Greenwich Avenue. Especially, we do know that unfortunately, construction has damaged some of these trees in the past, including the roots of some of our more delicate beech trees, which are some of our very beloved trees on the avenue. So we really hope that all efforts will be undertaken to mitigate any potential damages to those trees, especially in their critical root zones. So also something we've been dealing with lately is kind of issues from decades previously, problems they had planting those trees initially that unfortunately have resulted in their removal prior to their natural demise. So we just want to be kind of a voice for doing everything that you can to make sure that these new trees you're planting are going to last, you know, decades, maybe even a century. We personally would highly recommend the use of silver cell technology, which allows the tree's roots to have more healthy space to grow, kind of even despite being in a very urban environment. There is an increase in cost, but if you look at the benefits the tree would give over the many decades that they could hopefully healthily live with the place of those silver cells, we do think it would be a worthwhile investment and would be interested in working together with you if this was something you were interested in as well. Thank you.
Mr. Malkin, would you please allow yourself to speak and unmute?
Thank you. I'm also appreciative of the assurance that none of the existing trees will be removed or hopefully not damaged. I'd be interested to know two, three things. One, do you have the agreement of EverSource or whoever the illumination person is to the relocation of the street lamps that you have indicated? Number two, have you a number of new trees to be planted? And can you advise us of that? And number three, just another assurance that any new lighting stations will be the same design as the existing design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malkin. Dan, would you please allow yourself to speak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Just want to quickly say Jim, Steve and Ames, you've been putting this presentation together. I know that in District One, pedestrians have spoken about it in meetings and there's a lot of interest in remediating ADA issues on the avenue, so thank you for that. Also, thank you for adding trees in the Ave. I know that this is ancillary to the project you presented, but I think the addition of additional trees up and down Greenwich Avenue is essential to keeping Greenwich Avenue beautiful over time and also replacing some of the tree canopy that we miss in some other spots. So thank you for doing that. I think I'm the only person speaking tonight who actually lives on West Elm Street. And I can speak, I think on behalf of my building association, that our residents have really been very happy with the West Elm bump out project, including a lot of elderly people who live in my building. It's beautified the intersection without question. It has made traversing the avenue there much easier because walking from side to side and crossing the street is shorter, it's flat, the sightlines are improved. And I have not seen any of the incidents that were mentioned by some other speakers or heard of any of them in the years that it's been there. So I know it was an award-winning project. I think it's something we should be proud of in our town. And I wish every intersection on the avenue looked like it because I think it has a wow factor and it does improve safety. I also think that because Greenwich Avenue has fallen out of compliance on some of its ADA accessible spots, that we owe it to the community and to ourselves to remediate this. This is not really a choice. It's something we have to do. We cannot be out of compliance because it leaves our town at risk to lawsuits. And there are a lot of people who have relocated to downtown over the years who are older. There are a lot of people who are younger also who have moved here with children, who I know have expressed issues with regard to pedestrian safety. And I think the presentation you made tonight will go a long way toward increasing safety on the avenue, mitigating the issue for the town. And many of you guys, for the work you've done, thank you for your time and your continued efforts.
Thank you, Dan. Laureen Taylor, would you please allow yourself to speak?
Yes, good evening. Laureen Taylor here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First, I own the commercial property at 302 Delavan Avenue in Byram, where the Burger, Shake &amp; Fry fast food restaurant is located. And my question, has any commercial property owner for these sites discussed this evening in Greenwich either volunteered or been asked by the town to reduce in size the frontage of his commercial building to result in the widening of the sidewalk and road area? At these sites, I believe this would contribute to meeting safety measures that would either eliminate the need or reduce the size of the bump out design. I myself offered this proposal to the First Selectment Office and the DPW for the site work occurring in front of my building in Byram. However, no one acknowledged my proposal made for safety interests. So this speaks to the prior speaker, Dan, who spoke about safety in Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Lawler Kilgallen, please allow yourself to speak.
Good evening, Claire Kilgallen, for the record. I wanted to thank DPW for its thoroughness and its presentation in the work that it's done, in its coordination with the town bodies, fire, life, health, safety, sewer, et cetera. This is a comprehensive measure to address something that should have taken place decades ago. I'd like to say personally, we are all only temporarily able in our lives, whether we start out as children in strollers or we are temporarily disabled through accident. We're only temporarily able as years go on. It is shameful that a condition was put on funding to comply with federal law. Shameful. To some other points, the Byram bump outs, that was, that issue with the turn was done by a truck illegally driving on a non-truck road trying to turn onto Delavan. That's why there was a problem with the turn. Let's think about the historic district that some people are worried about. We should be allowing our elderly neighbors on Arch Street from the muse being able to cross to the senior center without taking their lives into their hands. This plan takes care of that. The accessible spots are required by law. It's been three decades. We have to satisfy town drainage. All of the things that people are raising as questions have been thoroughly vetted. This is a town project that they've all collaborated and talked together. You know, the hallmarks of Greenwich in our historic district should be accessed by everyone, not just people who are able-bodied. The time for ADA has come. As to the concern for meter times, this is the wrong forum for that. Address it with the First Selectment. Let's keep the discussion to this project. This project is to satisfy the ADA. And the reason why it's back is because the prior RTM turned down a grant and now you have to satisfy the law. The time has come. Thank you so much for all the work you've done. I appreciate the thoroughness and the professional analysis of your engineers that have measured and made everything as well as it has been designed. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on the Zoom.
Okay, up next, Steph Cowie, followed by Joanne Messina.
Very quickly, Alyssa Kalishian. Jim, thank you for this excellent plan and Gabrielle as well and the whole team. I know you guys work very hard. The passion you see in this room is because our residents and our businesses also find this to be an important issue. Two comments. One is, we do have issues at the Elm Street bump out. And I ask that maybe within this project, you consider fixing them as best as possible. I'm not sure if Dan and I live in the same town, but I do not find one person who doesn't have issues with either while they're driving or they're crossing. There's a lot of confusion, there's chaos, people are falling. You've heard earlier, the retailers and while they have a, you know, quiet day, they're watching what goes down in those corners. So please, if that's something you could address in this plan, if there's money, maybe that could be done. The reality is all of these issues we've talked about tonight are excellent, but they don't address the root problem, which is not on the table today, but I do ask you to think about it, which is overall parking in the downtown. The safety concerns, the community concerns would all be addressed if we took a look at some general parking structures with an actionable plan. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steph Cowie, 23-year resident of Greenwich. Hello, Skip. I want to remind everyone that being ADA compliant is the law. Again, this is not a nice to have. We are not compliant and many are watching. I'm here in support of the ADA improvements proposed by DPW this evening. And what has been proposed meets the law, being ADA compliant. There are questions about curb cuts, ramps, how tall, how long. What he is proposing by grade is compliant. There's nothing around it to change. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. We make a change that isn't compliant, then it isn't compliant. It is that simple. These intersections are not a word that I refuse to say that word because that is not what he is proposing. DPW is proposing what Jim presented this evening. They are not those words that I'm not going to use. It is merely a way to make it safer for everyone. This is not just for anyone with a disability, it is for the entire community, creating a safer avenue with ADA compliant crosswalks, curb extensions that are compliant, and accessible parking. 19 ADA accessible compliant stalls are not a lot. Today we have four, if you all want to go down the avenue and check them out. So that would be inclusive of 19, inclusive of the four. Anyone that wants to talk about where you get out of the car, how you get out of the car, someone with a walker, there are shared stalls and what was presented this evening are just for those reasons, that you could use a stall and shared so you're not taking up more and taking more parking away from anyone, that someone like myself would utilize a stall that I need to go to exit to the right because of my ramp. Someone with a walker who's a driver in the driver's seat could utilize the other side of the stall and we have a shared aisle. This is what being ADA compliant and inclusive is. No trees are being removed and additional green space surrounding, all of these areas will be installed. This is a win-win. Haven't these been the major things we've talked about? These compliance changes aren't only for people with disabilities, but it's safer for all who traverse the avenue. And some feel that these changes will impact merchants on the avenue. What about the impact with those with disabilities who want to shop or dine, just like every single one of you? I believe we all can agree that public safety is a priority. We have heard this for several weeks from various areas in town. Again, improving safety not only for the disabled population but for all. We should also be mindful of those who look to constituents I represent as only 10 people. There are many more of us advocating every day to get ADA compliance in all areas in our town. Please, do not wait. Do this today. There is no more, it is the law.
Thanks, Joanne. And that's the last of our list.
Good evening, Joanne Messina. I live a block and a half from the top of Greenwich Avenue, so I walk and occasionally drive this area daily. So first, I want to speak to the top of the avenue. I was there yesterday and happened to speak to the contractor who was working because I saw that, that there was construction being done. So obviously you've already begun the curbing and the sidewalk maintenance on the top of the avenue. I was surprised because I knew of the public hearing today. He then was gracious enough to explain to me the bump outs on the top of the avenue. And I do have some concern, watching that intersection on almost a daily basis, that narrowing right there is going to be difficult. Yes, it's a traffic issue and yes, it's a police issue, but people as it is try to get through the red light or try to get quickly and there is always pedestrians. So that really is a really difficult intersection. Generally, conceptually, I do support the idea that if you narrow roadways, it slows traffic as well as increases the safety of pedestrians. So generally, I'm in concurrence, but that top intersection is really tricky. And as I said, I'm there mostly daily. I also commend your making the tree wells consistent. I don't know that I agree with the Belgium block, but my question would be at the bottom of the avenue where there is silver cell, I would hope that that would remain as it is. And on the top of the avenue, on the east side, there are grates that do need to be removed because they're going into the tree, but I believe that the business owners installed that per the previous tree warden. So I think there is some, hopefully there's some room to have some of the things, some of these areas, these, the areas around these trees reinforced or kept where needed. To support Kate's remarks, silver cell is really important for these main areas. And in the case of not having enough space for sidewalks, if silver cell was used, that wouldn't be an issue because it's only the size of the trunk that would be the problem. Elm Street, I have witnessed trucks not being able to make that turn. I'm glad that you're looking into that for the other intersections. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else who hasn't spoke yet who would like to speak? Anyone else on Zoom?
No.
I am now going to go back and try and address some of the questions that have come up here or the comments and just hit on a couple items. So one of the questions was about the budget. The budget of $450,000, the original ask was for $800,000 for the completion of this project. This project, the cost, that's still probably the estimated cost. We also got funding through what's considered our annual ADA compliance program for $450,000. So between that project and this project, we feel we have the budget adequate to complete the work that is proposed as part of the proposals that we showed today. The distance between ADA stalls, we've tried to look at locations along the entire part of Greenwich Avenue, distribute the ADA stalls so that they're fairly equally distributed from top to bottom on the avenue, and giving locations that are nearest to a variety of different potential higher usage areas, such as the parks, the church, et cetera. As part of this, we do look at flooding concerns. We do look at drainage as part of these projects. We have addressed any concerns with that. We will need to do some minor relocation of drainage structures as part of this project, but that is all incidental to the project. Like I've stated, we do work with our staff that works in the plowing process and making sure that they can maneuver through these. They understand that these are necessary needs in order for us to meet the ADA compliance, and they work with us to make sure that what we are proposing does meet what they are able to maneuver their vehicles around. We are not making any changes that would impact the historic nature of Greenwich Avenue or the historic designation of Greenwich Avenue. The movement of the three fire hydrants are being minorly relocated, and we have worked with Aquarian as part of that project to minimize the cost and the impact of that. And in doing so, it actually allows us to add parking. As has been stated a couple times throughout, but the police issue is not an issue that DPW has control over, and it has been stated that that is not something that the police will be coming back to direct on the avenue. The work that we will be doing and some of the work that has already started has been work in between the intersections, especially near the top of the avenue that's outside of the areas that we discussed tonight. It's areas that are just replacing overall sidewalk in preparation for the repaving of Greenwich Avenue. That is being done as part of that project. As they're doing that, they're able to potentially add some tree wells as well through that. One of the questions came up that involved the tree wells and silver cell technology. The silver cell technology that was installed as part of a development at the bottom of the avenue will not be modified. It will not be changed, so there won't be any impact to that. We're actually, that's one of the areas that the sidewalk's already in current good shape, so we're not even replacing the sidewalks in that area, so we're not disturbing that. The two new tree wells, I know that there was a significant amount of discussion with the tree warden about the design of those. Many and most of the tree wells on Greenwich Avenue are currently about three feet wide by about five feet wide. We're now expanding those to four feet by eight feet to give the trees more room to grow. We're also working to the discussion of grates versus, you know, the Belgium block or other types of treatments there. The Belgium block desire allows them to create a bed where they can put some mulching around the base of the tree that helps with that and not have it spill out onto the sidewalks and so forth. So that was something that was discussed with them, and that was the desired approach to that. We have been in discussions with EverSource about the movement of the streetlights, and also, any new lights will be the existing, the same style as the existing lights. The exact number of new trees has not been determined, and like I said, as we continue down the avenue, if we determine there's a spot that we can add a new tree, we are going to be adding those. So once we're completed with the overall project, we'll probably be able to tell you how many new trees we've planted, but I think even in the stretch where the guys have been just replacing the sidewalks between Grig and Railroad, I think there's already five new trees, and that's short, one block stretch, so. So in doing our work and, you know, doing replacements of the sidewalks and impacting these, there's a number of challenges that we do face, including where existing doorways are and so forth. We do coordinate with each of the individual property owners prior to coming to their frontage to make sure that they are aware that we're going to be working within their property frontage. We understand that when you're replacing the sidewalk outside somebody's door, it is disruptive. Generally, we try to minimize that disruption, provide access to their property in a timely manner, and we look to see, is there any ability to reduce? You know, the question came up, was there any ability to reduce the size of these by impacting frontage? With Greenwich Avenue, there isn't really any room for us to impact frontage. It's all pretty much straight along there, so. Parking, I know that parking is something that constantly comes up on Greenwich Avenue as part of this project. This project, as I stated, is to address the ADA compliance issue, and by doing all the work that we're proposing to do, we've been able to add some additional parking stalls, and the net, you know, the net change is very minimal. So that pretty much addresses anything that we've had. So with that, I thank everybody for coming out tonight, and we will look forward to moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Will this now be available on the top?
We will post this presentation in the next few days onto the town's website for people to review within the Public Works section. I believe we do have a page for this project. I'm looking back at Gabrielle, and she's shaking her head yes, so that tells me that we do have a page. So probably, hopefully, if not tomorrow, it'll hopefully be there beginning of next week sometime. Thank you.
Jim?
I have a question. I come out of my two holes in there. I have a question for you. Hey, up front again, Mr. Ward Companies and the utility companies that are upgrading all these stuff for their use, and of course, the shop owners. Why are we putting the bill for paying that completely paid? Why aren't they at least sharing more?
So the question was that the utility companies have been doing work to upgrade their utilities on Greenwich Avenue, and why is the town not getting them to pay for at least some, if not all, of that repaving? Is that a good summary of your question? Just, I'm saying that just because we're recording and people are on Zoom, so. So when we do ask the utility companies, what we did when we started this project, and this project has been going on since 2016, looking at making improvements to Greenwich Avenue in order to repave Greenwich Avenue. We contacted all the utility companies prior to that timeframe, and we look at the condition of the existing pavement, and there is factors that get involved in those impacts to the existing pavement. If there's ways that we can get them to make, get fund, if the pavement conditions in a good enough level when they start their work, then they are held responsible for it. Greenwich Avenue has not been paved in over 40 years, and the condition of Greenwich Avenue is not in such a level where we are looking to obtain additional funding. The benefit is, we are monitoring what they're doing. They do have requirements for that. And any sidewalk impacts, any modifications to the curbs, et cetera, they are financially on the hook for making those changes and improvements to that.
In some of the intersections, they have been improved. There's, you know, new sidewalks, you know, at the intersections, you know, down by Grig and, you know, they have the red, the red pavement with the docks and all that. So was that sloping not clean accurately? What's going on there that they're not ADA compliant when they redid those sidewalks?
So the section between Grig Street and Railroad Avenue has been completed at this point, utilizing this existing, current year's ADA compliance money, if that's what you're asking about.
So some of this project has already been completed?
The section between Grig Street and Railroad Avenue has been completed.
And there's other, but if you walk up and down Greenwich Avenue, there are some other intersections that have new sidewalks? And when those were put in, not every sidewalk is like the top of the avenue. Some of them have new cement and.
There are some locations on Greenwich Avenue that do have current ADA compliant ramps, but some of those are not, may not meet all ADA compliance when you look at the length of the ramp, the proper, there's a proper landing area that's necessary once you come off of a ramp, and a location for someone to wait that's in a wheelchair. So some of those, and for instance, the location where, near the water fountain at the, kind of the point of restoration hardware, that's all currently in compliance, and we're not going to be making changes there. So there are a few locations that we aren't making changes at, but any locations that are necessary to meet ADA compliance, we are making changes at those locations.
So on your presentation, were those, some of those have been completed on your presentation tonight?
Yes, some of those between Grig Street and Railroad Avenue have been completed.
So let me ask you a question. The source of funds for this are $800,000 and $400,000 from various organizations, right? A million to, is that your estimate for this project?
No, $450,000 is part of this project, and then the additional funding that will be necessary for this project, which will be determined upon getting all the proper estimates, which we estimate are about, is probably going to be close to $800,000 to $900,000 for the whole project.
To include the $400,000?
$450,000 inclusive of that, yes.
The $450,000 is design money, right?
No, that is construction money. All the design is being completed in-house.
And you're doing eight intersection for $800,000?
Something, yeah, approximately that, yes.
And Elm Street, Greenwich Avenue costs how much? Five years ago or 10 years ago?
Approximately $450,000.
That was over budget. So how much would it cost just to be, to make the sidewalks ADA compliant?
Without beautification?
Yeah, without all the beautification.
In order to make the improvements necessary for, in order to make the necessary improvements for this project, it's going to be the $800,000 to $900,000.
To make it ADA compliant?
To make it ADA compliant.
And so another $400,000 for the beautification?
No, the improvements we're proposing are all related to ADA compliance.
The beautification doesn't cost that much.
The beautification is incidental to the improvements being proposed.
So the breakouts or whatever you call those things, that's part of being ADA compliant?
Correct.
How is the town?
Can you use the mic, please?
Sure. How is the town or DPW informed that you were out of compliance? Has there been a lawsuit, or has there been any legal action taken, or is this DPW's own initiative?
There has been a filing through the Board of, or through the town's accessibility coordinator, and there has been an agreement made through the Board of Selectmen to make these improvements.
Oh, so the Board of Selectmen made a deal with someone?
Well, as part of the ADA requirements, that we are required to make these improvements, it is a compliance issue, yes.
Who provides that compliance? Who tells you what the compliance numbers are?
The town is responsible for meeting ADA compliance.
With who?
Through the call.
Through the federal regulations.
And has the federal government informed you that you're out of compliance? Or just the complainant? And I assume that's a town resident, but not the federal government?
Well, we understand what the requirements are, and we are looking to meet those ADA compliance requirements.
Have you posted those on your website at DPW?
It's a federal requirement, so.
So you have?
The town, the town was.
I just want DPW to, you know, be transparent about what they're doing.
You said they're going to.
Yes, in the back there, if you can step up so that it's on the mic.
Forgive me because I'm new to these public hearings in town government, but I have lived in Greenwich over 30 years. How do we reconcile our goal, our desire, our wish, our commitment to becoming ADA compliant, Greenwich Avenue, elsewhere in Greenwich, and not at the expense of safety for vehicular traffic, for pedestrian traffic, and for other aspects of our way of life? Because we're doing, it feels very much in isolation. And in isolation, it feels like we're making decisions and implementing them at the cost and trade-off. And irrespective of one of the people who spoke here tonight, people who walk the avenue, people who use the avenue, people who frequent the avenue for, as consumers, and for people who are the merchants and the retailers and the employers, all have a same story, and that's very real, and that has changed since we became ADA compliant at one intersection, and it involved the planting and the bumpouts and the block, and now we have trucks and fire trucks and near misses regularly, daily. So how do we reconcile that? Thank you.
I think one of the things I would mention in relation to that is that we as a town, we as a public, have to understand that roads are not just for vehicles, are not just for pedestrians, they're not just for people in cycles. This is, roads are to be used by everybody, and we have to be respectful of when you get to an intersection, that if there's a pedestrian there, it's, you need to take the time to wait for that pedestrian to move. So these are all pieces of. to move. So these are all pieces of just generalized understanding of when you're utilizing a facility, that you have to think about what else goes into it. One of the big things dealing with safety is cell phones, distracted driving. All these things have impacts to the safety of people out there. Speeding, vehicles having the ability to drive faster. All these aspects are things that we have to look into and address, and we have to understand and we have to take into account, as time changes and as different demands change on us, as different technologies are made, we have to adjust our design process. We have to look at each feature and see, how can we accommodate what is happening for something while still maintaining the character of the community? And that's what we're trying to do with this. These are minimally impactful to the community. This is, you know, I knew coming into tonight, every, and I was shocked that not too many people brought up, you know, what about that intersection down at Arch Street? You know, why is this not like, you know, this is significantly less than what we proposed before. We heard the people's comments. We understand this is to address the minimum impacts to the community and try and address those pieces to meet our ADA compliance. That's what we're trying to accomplish with this project. David, go ahead.
Back to what you said there about Arch Street and Greenwich Avenue. When we discussed Greenwich Avenue two years ago to $2.8 million at Arch Street, I remember again and again it was to meet ADA compliance, and that was $2.8 million plus traffic safety. Now you're saying that these intersections are running at about $100,000 to do the minimum requirements for the ADA compliance. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the 2.8 was a little bit over budget?
The 2.8 was accomplishing many different things in addition to ADA compliance. It was addressing the desire for additional parking. It was addressing many other safety concerns that could be looked at as part of this. This is strictly to address ADA compliance.
Okay, because I look at the drawings again, I took pictures of them, and I see you're adding longer crosswalks than existing. So I'm just puzzled with it, and I'm back to the question, if we approved this and implemented on Greenwich Avenue, will we have to do it in Costco, Glenville, Byram, Old Greenwich, et cetera, et cetera?
Townwide?
With ADA requirements?
Townwide, the town is required to meet ADA requirements.
Okay, so.
The town has, the town has on their website, through the, through the First Selectmen's Committee with Persons with Disabilities, what's called a ADA transition plan. That transition plan outlines all the non-compliance issues across town, all the locations that need to be addressed as part of that, and that based on a, we've looked to accomplish that plan over time, based on currently a $450,000 annual investment that could take anywhere between 30 and 50 years.
Okay, but this for Greenwich Avenue, is that under any time restraint?
The entire project, the entire ADA transition plan is a document that we're looking to accomplish as soon as possible to bring this town into ADA compliance.
I'm just asking the question again. During the Arch Street-Grenwich Avenue plan over the grant, you said that you had worked on this for seven years. Is, are we now under some kind of a time restraint to get Greenwich Avenue in compliance?
Since, I mean, we are looking to make Greenwich, Greenwich as a whole ADA compliant.
As the gentleman asked, is there a federal requirement that we have this by 2025 or 2026 or anything like that?
So the only, the only statement I would make is that ADA compliance is a federal requirement. If people, people have a right to file complaints against the town, and then many communities across the country have gotten consent decrees against them through the federal government. Los Angeles has like a $2 billion consent decree against them for making these compliance. At this specific time, Greenwich has shown adequate improvements being made as part of our community to, that we have not gotten a, you know, I don't want to jinx myself, but we have not received a federal complaint as of yet, but that doesn't mean that that's something that couldn't happen in the future, so.
Can I just address this too, please? I think what the issue here is, and I'm sorry, I'm, Karen Fasoliotis, the issue here, the reason why we are doing this or why this is being proposed is that Greenwich Avenue is being repaved. We have curb cuts for ADA, you know, for handicapped individuals. We do have ADA parking on Greenwich Avenue, but because you are repaving, you need to take a look at this, is that correct, and bring it up to the current, I mean, when it was done, it was done towards the current standards.
There is a state, yes, there is a state regulation that states that anytime you repave a road, you have to make sure that that road meets ADA compliance. Correct, Karen? Steph, did you guys say something?
Sorry again, Steph Cowie, just to everyone, Mr. Wall, just your understanding that it is a federal law. It's not the town law. It's not just a state law. It's a federal law. It was in 1993, and many would say we have been very patient, that it is now 2024. By the time this is all done, it could be 2025, and it isn't that, and I feel like everyone's saying, so if we're doing this here on Greenwich Avenue, is it going to bleed to the rest of the town? Well, one would hope that it would, that it would be ADA compliant throughout our entire town. And while some may say that it was compliant whenever it was done, it wasn't done properly many years ago. The last time Greenwich Avenue was paved was 40 years ago, 40 years ago. It's before ADA even existed. So to those that did that back then, they didn't do it wrong when they did it. Now we're trying to make sure that Department of Justice doesn't come in and say, you have to do it and you're going to do it our way. This is being done our way. We're following the ADA law, federal, and since 1993. And by the way, transition plans were supposed to be completed across all municipalities by, I believe it was 1996. All transition plans were supposed to be completed by every minute, excuse me, Karen, when you spoke, I didn't speak. Did I? Again, Ms. Fasoliotis, I would just like to have some decorum, please. It is disturbing that we even have to have the conversation, that this is such a pain point for so many. The avenue is not changing. It is not losing its character. If anything, it's gaining. It's gaining character. It's gaining public safety, and that is what our town municipality is supposed to do, provide safe passage for everybody. That isn't a vehicle, walking, riding, doing whatever you'd like to do, cycling, whatever. All I'm saying is, this really isn't anything that's new. This isn't anything that we're just kind of throwing at anyone and hoping that you'll all understand. If you'd like to read more about it, I'd be happy to sit with you and to discuss the ADA and the many nuances of it. I'm more than happy to. You can actually go on the government site and just look up ada.gov, and you can find all the information that you might like to know. But I appreciate your time. I really do, and I'm sorry if I get heated, but when you hear people make those kinds of comments that are just not accurate or correct, it is completely just despicable.
Jim, there are two more on Zoom. Kristen Cready, please allow yourself to speak. Kristen, if you can unmute yourself. Okay, I'll skip over to Claire. Claire, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, just wanted to add that to the question about where the federal law is, we don't need to refer to the federal law on a town website when we have the Library of Congress and we have the statutes of the government of the United States of America. We don't have, if you want to have a link there, have at it, but it's not necessary and it's preposterous. The ignorance of the law is no excuse. 28 years after you're supposed to have a transition plan in place, this town has put one together, and they've been out of compliance for 28 years. We're darn lucky that people haven't brought lawsuits because they're trying to work with the town. So think about that. People have been trying to work with this town to get this done. There are a lot of processes in this town. It makes things difficult. The glacial pace of this town is no excuse for not complying with a law that's been on the books for over three decades. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and like we said, we'll post this to the town's website. Thank you.